Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, November 24, 2014, City of Moscow City Council Public Works Finance Committee meeting. I'm Walter Stu, Chair of the Committee. To my right is Dan Carskallen, Councilmember. To my left, Art Bedke, Councilmember. And to his left, filling in for Gary Redner, who is, I guess, on vacation but isn't here, is Bill Belknap, Community Development Director. First item of business is approval of the minutes of the November 10 meeting, and I was not present, so it's up to you two.
Good by me.
I'm all right with them two, so I would move their approval.
I would presume they are approved. Okay, item two. Gotta be our favoritest fellow traveler, Mr. Tim Davis, to talk about single-stream curbside recycling again.
Reported to the committee on November 10th, where they reviewed the draft RFP, the committee requested that options be included for the cart sizes, the various cart sizes, 35, 65, and 95. Gary altered the RFP because I was not present the remaining part of that week, and I got ill the following week. But if you look on the back page of the RFP, item number two, for the responses to the RFP, must include unit costs for the different-sized roll carts. And the reason it was done that way, and that's just on the residential side, the commercial or the apartment side, we elected to leave that with the 95s. But the reason it was done that way is there is no way to anticipate what kind of quantities we might need of the different sizes. If we do offer the three different sizes, there's just no way to tell. So we asked for the unit prices there.
So are you saying you agree with that change that Gary made?
That is the only way that I know of how to do, to conduct that.
At least get a number.
We'll get a number, and I suspect what we're gonna see is we're gonna save $68 between the various sizes. The other thing we need to look at is we will most likely require added inventory because there will be folks that need to swap. And the other item that we haven't anticipated and did not anticipate originally was operations and maintenance of the program with the various sizes. That includes, well, for an example, right now, we offer the three different sizes for the residential garbage roll cart program, and we're paying $40,000 annually for admin, cart swaps, cart assignment, that type of thing. With this program, we'll be adding another approximately 4,000 apartment units, which could run that cost up to that same rate, about $72,000 a year.
Well, you won't be changing out carts at the apartments.
We most likely will be if there's three different sizes out there. We'll have new tenants moving in and moving out and that type of thing.
Okay. Would you, are you gonna get enough data to be able to tell us that offering more than one-sized cart will cost X dollars?
I can just tell you from the experience that we have had with the garbage roll cart side that that will be the case.
Well, let's see how LSI prices it out in this response.
Absolutely.
Regarding the multiple sizes, I've come around to thinking that maybe a 65 is a good idea as well as a 95. I'm not convinced a 35 is a good idea. I'm not sure if you generate that little recycle in a two-week period, including cardboard, which takes up a lot of space, maybe you shouldn't be recycling. I mean, it's, I think-
Or it's small enough you can take it in your car.
Exactly. I probably lean more to a 65, 95 than to a 35, 65, 95.
Well, I'd lean to just a single size, but, you know, I still wanna at least see what the options are. And then remind us, Tim, 'cause Walter wasn't here, about why we, you decided that not having the larger dumpsters at the apartments was, why it was a bad idea, I guess?
It's not necessarily a bad idea, but we have had a little bit of experience with it. The University of Idaho conducted a pilot program, and this was about the time I was coming onboard in 2009, where they did some single-stream experimentation up there. And they had some folks from their sustainability, I don't know the exact name of it, but their sustainability folks were monitoring the dumpsters, and they just could not get away from all the contamination. And the thought here is going with the 95-gallon carts is that we anticipate the contamination issue is most likely going to be coming from those apartment units. We have a lot of college-age folks that are, you know, a new set of folks coming in each year, having to learn the system and that type of thing. And when you have one cart that's contaminated, that's easier to deal with than a large dumpster. The other thing that we'd be looking at is we'd be looking at a completely different truck to have to service those dumpsters. So now we're talking about another large, expensive piece of equipment where the rest of the program's set up to deal with carts. And then my own personal issue with it is the recycle fee will, the way we're envisioning it, become a part of the garbage fee or a part of the base fee. So we want to make that a uniform fee, so everybody's paying the same for the same service. So those are just a couple of examples.
Which we don't do now with the solid waste?
No.
Okay.
The apartment units that use dumpsters do not currently pay a base fee, but they do pay a commercial rate.
Okay.
I wanna see how the numbers play out, but I think this is a good RFP to elicit those numbers and give us a basis from which to make our decisions.
Does it ask for dumpster type at apartments?
No.
No, he talked us out of it.
Do we wanna get the number?
I don't think so, for the reasons-
I think the contamination issue is the-
Yeah. That pushed me over the edge. Losing a 95 is a whole lot easier to deal with than losing an entire dumpster.
Okay. I got an email this afternoon from Dan Schoenberg, who's a property manager for, I don't know how many units or buildings in town. And I'd like to read it. I meant to bring copies, but I didn't. Stephanie, I just emailed it to you for the record. It says, "I am writing concerning the single-stream recycling that will be before committee this afternoon. I wish I could be there, but I will be out of town. Please know that Ploos Properties supports single-stream recycling concept and are encouraged by the current conversations taking place. We believe that it would be wise to look at an option whereby a mechanical dumpster is used for recycling purposes at large complexes rather than only roll carts. The management of roll carts at some of our facilities will become very burdensome at best and difficult to keep the carts in a centralized location. Understanding the price difference between the two options would seem to provide a way to make a price-value decision concerning roll carts versus mechanical dumpsters. Thank you, and if we can be of further assistance in this process, feel free to let us know." So that's Dan Schoenberg's two cents.
I think another advantage might be to using the carts at the apartment units, too, is we have a number of complexes that have multiple units on the property, and instead of having several dumpsters on the property, we could put, like, you know, two or three carts per unit and, you know, move those around, you know, a lot easier.
The other item, and I talked to Tim about this earlier today, and he informed me that the recycle center currently, as it's being operated, will continue to operate in the same fashion. In other words, if you wanna drive your recycling down there and put the glass in the glass dumpster, put the cardboard in the cardboard box, put the plastic in the plastic box, you can do that, and that recycling will stay sorted and go outsorted. So it won't be commingled if it comes through the recycle center. And I don't know about y'all, but I didn't understand that, so.
Oh, I did.
Now I'm up to speed.
No, we didn't anticipate changing those operations down there, at least initially. I mean, we look at this thing five years down the road, and all of a sudden, we have 90% participation with curbside recycling, then we might have to take a step back and say, "Hey, maybe we need to change that operation a little bit." But for now, I wouldn't anticipate changing that at all.
Anything else?
I'll be interested to see the numbers.
Let's move forward.
Can we send this out as an RFP, or does it have to go through council? It was supposed to have gone before council last meeting. Tim was not available, and council by three-to-two vote or whatever it was, by email, said, "Drop it and bring it back at some future date."
I think it'd be my recommendation to continue on to the council on the December 1st meeting. It really won't cause any significant delay. That's just a week from today, and then it can go out from there.
The holidays, it isn't gonna happen anyway.
Yeah, there you go.
Consent agenda or otherwise?
I mean, we've all seen it several times, and I think it's got all the items in it that everybody wants. I'm okay with putting it on consent, but, you know, I guess if somebody wants to pull it that night, then, you know, I'm sure Tim can make himself available for that first few minutes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If he's not, we can get Don there.
I had anticipated, I had given a couple PowerPoints to Public Works Finance Committee. First was an overview, the second was a transition. I've kinda combined those PowerPoints into about 12 slides for the benefit of the admin committee that haven't been onboard all the way through. I don't know if that would be beneficial.
Might have it ready just in case.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be good.
Or you could just put it in as part of the packet, too.
Say we exclude it as an attachment to the packet.
Yeah.
Has admin seen it yet?
No.
Not yet, okay.
No.
Tom has, but I don't know about-
What I did was took part of the overview presentation, combined it with the second presentation, and I also gave that to SEC as well. And I'll just attach that as part of the packet.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna see this again with those again, too, with the numbers, you know, the actuals, hopefully, then, so we can get the-
Sure.
Actually make the decision there-
Sure.
Whenever they come back at this.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, item three, development agreement for Ridgeview Estates Second Edition subdivision. Scott Bontrager is presenting, and looks like he has help. Back up.
Yeah, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So the first item I'm bringing you today is the development agreement for Ridgeview Estates Second Edition subdivision. And kind of a little overview on this, this is the Second Edition to, or Second Edition of Ridgeview Estates, which is the new subdivision that is being proposed east on Highway 8, north of Carmichael Road. This has been through the process before with the plat, went through council, and the monumentation agreement went through council. Both were approved on September 2nd, 2014. This is just the next piece of it, which at that time, the committee had previously looked at this on September 8th, which at that time, the developer's attorney wanted to add some additional language to it. So this is a standard agreement that they have modified to add a couple sections of it to tie the language and the timelines in the monumentation agreement to the development agreement timelines, as opposed to those normally being separate from each other.
And they don't have a problem getting that monumentation done at the same time? Okay.
No, it'll actually work better.
'Cause normally, I think contractors don't wanna do that monumentation while they're still stirring around out there and run the risk of having to do them twice.
Yeah.
But this is their proposal to do it this way.
This is their proposal, this is the way they wanted it set up.
Okay. Phil?
It seemed pretty straightforward to tie everything together and keep the wheels turning, as it were, and no big changes that would adversely impact the city or the development, at least as I read it.
Nothing new than we've had before, so.
Okay. I think we can put that on consent.
Yep.
Looking back and turning the page, I can see why they're still here.
See why Scott hadn't left yet.
Yeah. Next item is Park View Estates Edition subdivision development agreement, and Scott has the floor.
So this is the amendment to the Park View Estates Edition subdivision development agreement. This one is an amendment, I'll give you kind of a background on this one. Back in July, a lot-line adjustment was made to block one, Lot 1 of the subdivision to create a small parcel that is currently being developed as Minneki.
And Park, just to help everybody else remember what I have trouble remembering, Park View Estates is the vacant property immediately north of Moscow Building Supply on Highway 95 and runs up to Rodeo.
Yep.
Okay.
That's Block 1, Lot 1 of the subdivision. And at that time, the, with the lot-line adjustment, there was also amendment to the development agreement to allow the development of what is being developed as Minneki now to be done without the traffic impact study that was required initially with the development of Park View Estates. So since then, the traffic impact study had been conducted by Hodg and Associates, which has been reviewed and approved by both Idaho Transportation Department and city staff. And with that approval, what we would like is to adjust the development agreement now to, well, there was specific language or specific assumptions within the traffic impact study for the land use that was being predicted for Lot 1, Block 1 of the subdivision. And with this-
That created the answers from the study?
Yes. And those-
Regarding traffic volumes, need for signals, warrants, all that, okay.
Yes. And with that particular assumptions, there was currently no warrants for any additional traffic mitigation up there, including a traffic signal. So with this amendment to the development agreement, it's basically gonna state that if any of the predicted land uses exceed what was predicted to impact with the type of development, the amount of volume-
Any of the actual-
The actual-
Land uses-
Land uses.
Exceed the predicted.
Yeah. As determined by the city engineer, that it can be revisited if a new traffic impact study will need to be created for that.
Okay.
Sounds pretty simple to me.
Glad to see they've actually filled with the study. Got it through the ITD and city staff, so good. I feel better.
Scott, one thing I would like to see done on page one of the amendment is in the third whereas, to add the word attached right behind the stamped date on the traffic study, and then attach that traffic study. I trust and believe that y'all can find both of these documents 20 years from now, but if they're tied, if they're hooked together, if you've got one, you've got them both.
Yeah.
I think that is the only thing that I had in it, so that's all I've got.
Okay.
Okay, consent? And, let's see, I'm gonna blink, and they're still here. Oh, Bob's. Bob's gonna run the show.
He can just run on the show, there you go.
Okay, number five, D Street Community Choices Design Agreement. And Scott Bontrager.
So this next one is D Street Community Choices Design Agreement. We've gone through the process on this one. In 2013, the city had applied and was awarded an ITD, Idaho Transportation Development Grant for the Community Choices of Idaho. And this grant, you got the presentation, was being proposed to make some improvements to Moscow Middle School, including improvements to the parking lot layout on both the west parking lot and the smaller east parking lot, and also improve the pedestrian crossings and put in a median through there just to increase safety in the area, kinda help delineate better where crossings are and overall increase safety for everything.
You're gonna get rid of that wonderful angled-
Yes.
-bed crossing that everybody doesn't understand?
Yeah.
So is this formerly State Safe Routes to Schools? Is that what the Community Choices is?
This is, Community Choices is part of the new Safe Routes to School. It's, they've kind of joined a few different grants together for this. But the design agreement for this is an agreement with Rita Sel Engineering to do the engineering design for this particular project. They were on the list with ITD as, on the ITD term agreement list, which makes it so it was a consultant that we could just choose directly from the list. And the design has been negotiated for the labor hours required for this project, which was settled in the amount of $43,100, and that's what this agreement itself reflects.
What's the, what's the green dot in the middle?
That is a traffic calming circle. One of the, one of the problems that the middle school currently experiences is people using the parking lot as a cut-through between East Street and D Street. One of the proposed mitigations for that would be adding the traffic circle in there. This is, these are conceptual drawings, not completely designed yet, but-
You gonna donate a big bear to stand in that thing or something?
That's what they ought to do, public car.
The, after a meeting with the school district, they would, they would prefer to see possibly a raised crosswalk connecting the bear den to the new path, or the path on the, on the west side of the parking lot there.
Oh, I see.
A raised crosswalk in there would be used to mitigate the people driving through rather than the traffic circle, but-
Yeah, part of the improvements with this project is the addition of a 10-foot multi-use path there on the lower part of the image here.
From E to D?
Yes.
That's the west side.
The west side of the parking lot.
Yep. And then these are kinda some conceptual photographs of what, what D Street would resemble after. So that would be the median that Scott was talking about, kinda a plan view of it there.
What, what is the black area just south of the middle school label? Is that part of the project or just happened?
The black area-
That long, black trapezoid?
Oh, the, the black areas would wind up being new or resealed asphalt, so that, that black area is actually, would wind up being a patch, is what that is.
Okay.
That's, that's currently there, it's currently asphalt.
That's the, is that the school bus drop off?
They use it kind of as a staging area right now, I believe, where they, they store a couple buses before, before it clears out, and they can, they can get the next bus into the, into the parking lot. And then this is kinda the proposed cross-section, what the pathway would resemble. And then this is also part of the, part of it would be adding some flashing beacons to the-
Mountain View.
To the crossings on D Street.
On D.
The proposed-
The two crossings on D.
Yeah. The proposed project doesn't have any improvements to Mountain View.
And those flashers do what when? They flash all the time? They flash when they're keyed?
There, there, there's a push button, and they, they flash when a student or pedestrian pushes the button, and then they go across. So it's, it's, it's a warning to the driver that somebody's in the crosswalk and crossing.
If you would, Bob, back, back up one or two slides, I have one more, one more, one more. Okay, in the upper right corner by the tennis courts, a couple of black lines, is that part of this?
Uh, no.
Okay.
What's that?
The two black lines up by the tennis courts.
I think that's might just be shadows.
I believe that's a shadow, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if that was something you were building out there or not.
No.
Okay.
No, it might have been at the time when this was developed, that was prior to the school district putting in the sidewalk, and it might have been something that was an image at that time. But the school district has put in sidewalk up there since then.
Okay, all right. Yes, sir.
I was just wondering, in the finance area, it looked like this grant took off back in 2013. There's been delays. So with any of this, is there any adverse impact to the budget due to these delays and getting the grants and matching funds, et cetera?
Not necessarily.
I don't like necessarily.
Well, no, there's not.
There you go.
No. We're just carrying the funding over to accommodate the project as it has moved along.
Okay, so carryovers are fine.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is there some, and I guess this is just the engineering part right here, but is there some participation by the school, by the district?
The school is proposing to participate with some additional work out there, not necessarily related to this grant, but while we're there, they're wishing to add some additional money to do some more work.
Okay. But the, the grant is, I mean, even though a lot of that is on school district property, the, the grant is through the city.
Okay. I know you must have something.
No, I'm waiting to see if you had anything else. To answer your question, Dan, I believe, if, I think I heard this earlier, if the school district does wanna do additional work and brings cash to the table, if we bid, if the city bids the project, we can increase the scope of work, take their money, put it into the budget, and have the work done.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. My other one was project schedule under the milestones, notice to proceed, 11:17. Here we said it, 11:24. Is that gonna be a problem?
No, well, the scope of work here was created prior to this being presented, and it's not affecting the overall schedule.
I just hate to plow snow down that street when that's all done, but that's, that's a whole nother issue.
Not your problem.
Not my problem.
Okay, consent agenda? I think you've run out of items, Scott. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You have to stand up now. Send your boss down, would you? Okay. Okay, next item, Sixth Street Right-of-Way Acquisition. Public Works Director Les McDonald will present, and he's headed to show us pretty pictures, too. Good afternoon.
Well, this is a topic that we've talked about a little bit before, the last time being back in July of this year. And at that time, we were talking about kind of the initial discussion, if you will, of an issue related to a traffic lane configuration problem that currently exists out in the Jackson and Sixth Street intersection. So I'd like to take a couple of minutes and just kinda run back through a portion of that presentation to help refresh everybody's memory on what this particular topic is about, and then we'll step into some new information and a new alternative with respect to potential solutions to the situation. So just to help orient folks a little bit, this is the intersection of Jackson Street running north-south and Sixth Street east-west. The property here on the northwest corner is where the new Jimmy John's building is currently under construction. This is the URA property here to the southwest. The issue that we have out there is that the street configuration is such that we have this opposing traffic flow situation, where we have eastbound through traffic, following the arrows here, and in essence, what's a center lane, so really in the middle of the road section, opposing a westbound left-turn pocket, so here, so traffic that's here makes this corner and turns to the south. Well, obviously, they are lined up directly across from each other. That has been that way for some time, and it has a lot to do with what is available in terms of street width, right-of-way width, and the needs to accommodate turning movements and bicycle traffic and a variety of other items like that. Part of what we see, though, is as folks are making the turn- Part of what we see, though, is as folks are making the turn eastbound in the right turn lane, they're making this corner here, a little bit of a green dash line somewhat represents that turning movement. Along with that is the fairly severe transition from left to right that eastbound through traffic must make to move from this alignment to this alignment over the distance of the width of the intersection.
Amazing, it seems to work.
Well, it does, but not always. And then thrown in the midst of all that is a bicycle lane, and if you, let me back up here a second. The bicycle lane is located right here, and you can see as this particular movement shifts to the right as you're, as you're working across the intersection, and the vehicles here are making the corner, there's a bit of a pinch point right in here. And normally, you would want that bicycle lane to have at least a full five-foot width through there, but I think it, many times, we see that is not the case. It is a situation that creates a lot of issues for bicyclists passing through, uncertainty in terms of whether or not they're going to get caught between two vehicles that are passing eastbound through the intersection. And then on top of that, of course, the vehicles that are heading westbound that are also turning left and have the same green light phase that the eastbound traffic has, if they pull out at all in advance of making that corner, which people tend to do, that just complicates the matter because then the eastbound traffic has to move further to the south more quickly, which then puts them in conflict with those bicycles, or keeps them in conflict with the vehicle that they're opposing, depending on how people react to the situation. It is amazing it works, and, you know, people are pretty aware of it.
I was gonna ask, you know, crash data, is it, is there a lot of it there, or?
This, this is actually the highest crash location in the city of Moscow.
Really?
It is one of the locations that is on the District Two ITD list of intersections that needs to be addressed for traffic safety. A lot of that crash data is related to angle impact, so it's either turning movements or vehicles that are encountering each other in the midst of the intersection. It's not a T-bone necessarily, sometimes, and it's not necessarily a rear-end accident, but it's more of some other angle of accident or interaction between vehicles. So, the engineering department, Public Works, has been looking at possibilities on this intersection for some time, identified a couple of these that we talked about back in July. The first of these that we call alternate number one involved acquiring property from the urban renewal agency here to the south so that the curb line could be relocated along this upper red line here coming on around, with the idea that the eastbound lane could then be redirected such that it lines up more directly with the east side of the intersection and no longer opposes the left turn movement. This particular option includes a, an island that is proposed to accommodate a traffic signal post, which is located where the star sits. It is the traffic light system that is there.
In this, in this, that pole would not be, have to be moved, it'd be in the same location.
Yes, this island would allow that traffic signal pole to remain in its current location, and would take the right turning movement then on the lower side of the island and on around the corner. The bike lane would also transition along with the eastbound traffic lane and line up with the bike lane on the other side of the intersection. This particular option gives us really the cleanest alignments in terms of the lanes crossing from east to west, or west to east, excuse me, across the intersection, also preserves the location of the traffic signal pole, but does in turn require the largest amount of right-of-way acquisition for the improvements. The second alternative that was discussed was this version, which did not include an island, it just widened the road by moving the curb line to the south, still maintains that nice clean transition from west to east across the intersection, essentially a somewhat straight shot through the intersection for the bike lane and the travel lane. The downside of this particular one is it does require relocation of the traffic signal pole to some spot probably here behind the walk. The upside is it reduces the amount of right-of-way required.
And a power pole.
And there's also a power pole in there, so if that power pole is to remain, it would also have to be relocated, and then potentially some other power line reconfigurations east and west of this location. Again, the, the positive here was that the reduction in the right-of-way needs, so reducing the impact on the URA property, but seeing an increased cost associated with relocation of utilities and signal poles.
And the, and the green line around the star of that, is that current?
That's current property line.
Property of the right-of-way line.
Right-of-way line, yes. Okay. Both of these options were considered, pros and cons. The URA representatives were approached a little bit about some of this, they had some concerns about portions of it, so the engineering staff kind of went back and thought about it some more and came up with a third alternative, which is what we'll talk about today. And it's in a little bit different format as far as the drawing is concerned, and we'll zoom in here in just a second, but again, same, same location, Jackson, Sixth Street intersection. And the concept here is to do a shift of the lane to the south, same as before, but not to make it a full lane width adjustment. It would be essentially closer to a half lane width adjustment. In this case, we'll zoom in a little bit. What you see here is an addition of a five-foot striped median.
Like on Third Street.
Similar to what is on Third Street in this very type of situation. That would represent the offset of the eastbound lane from where it currently exists to a point five feet south of that with the northern edge of the lane, also going to a twelve-foot lane, so it's slightly wider than what's out there. By doing that, we reduce this conflict with the opposing lane in that we're no longer directly lined up with it, we're essentially a half lane offset, and then the length of the intersection crossing here is sufficient that we can make the transition from this alignment to this alignment in a manner that's consistent with the design standards for roadways at this speed and type. There are, there are guidelines and specifications out there pertaining to how quickly you can transition a lane from one location to another location. Obviously, as you go faster, such as on highways, those transitions get a lot longer. Twenty-five mile an hour roadway situations such as this, the length here is sufficient to allow that much of a transition, essentially a half lane transition over the distance of the intersection.
The, the length is the same, though, as it is currently?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, but a full lane width transition across an intersection was, was not within the standards. So this is an acceptable alternative from that perspective in that it does allow a transition that meets those standards that can be done safely through this kind of situation.
Your, your stop bars would remain where they are, more or less?
More or less, they, they could shift slightly. In this particular case, or, you know, this draft shows the transition point starting here rather than here, so it's possible we would bring them back a bit to help with that alignment. You could start a lane striping transition before you get to the stop bar, that's something we'd have to look at in detail as we got into a design. The other part of this that goes along then is the bike lane is better aligned from the west to the east, and the right turn lane then continues to the south of the bike lane on around. We don't have as much of a situation here with the pinch point, obviously, it can still occur if this turning vehicle goes too far out before it makes a corner and starts encroaching into this five-foot bike lane, but generally speaking, the curvature of the new curb line here is gentle enough, and there's a wide enough section that they're going out into that, that shouldn't really be a problem. It certainly should be better conditioned that we, what we have today in terms of that pinch point.
Les, what, what people tend to do today, making that right turn movement, is immediately start heading for either the center or the easternmost southbound lane.
Yes.
Would dashing, as your red line indicates, be...
An option.
An option? Would it help? Would it...
I, I think it would, and this...
Keep them, keep them in that lane until they get around the corner and straighten out?
Yeah, this is an intersection where I think guidance striping like that would be beneficial, both going around the corner to help remind folks that the legal turn is into the near lane, okay, not the far lanes, and that there is a bike lane that traverses across the street. So a stripe or dash to skip line across that intersection would be, I think, pretty appropriate in this location.
Yes, sir.
Are we looking at adding a green strip with this option? I think that's what I'm reading there.
Actually, no. In this case, one of the, the differences between this plan and the previous ones was that the earlier drawings showed a five-foot wide sidewalk. Since the time that those were put together and actually started back in about 2009, believe it or not, the city has developed more of what we feel is going to be the streetscape look for the urban renewal area, legacy crossing area, which is similar to what's on College Street. So this represents now a ten-foot wide sidewalk.
And also to the south then, huh?
Well, a ten-foot walk from the curb line back with the street trees and the vintage style lighting, similar to what we've done on College and what's happening in front of the MSI building. So it's consistent with that.
I'm talking southbound on...
Jackson.
On Jackson.
Oh, I'm sorry, on Jackson. Yeah, the curb line right now is laid out such that we miss the signal pole, so that dictates a little bit of where this goes, and then getting a larger curb radius for turning movements around there, we're showing it then ending up two feet off of the westerly southbound lane. As far as what goes in that area between that curb line and the existing sidewalk, we really haven't determined for sure. Most likely, it would be a continuation of this ten-foot walk.
Of what's going on up there?
Yeah, with the idea...
Down to College?
Yeah, with the idea that it would continue all the way down to College. Could there be some planner strips in certain areas as part of the theme? Perhaps. Most likely, it would continue with the ten-foot, with the street trees and the lighting that we've done and would be doing here on Sixth Street as well.
So again, on Jackson, where you have the dimensioning, what's there now?
The width, um, here?
The curb line, the sidewalk, how does, what's there now?
Yeah, there's, there are three travel lanes out here, and then there's about a, this shows us an eight-and-a-half feet width here. That is just a little bit of no man's land, it's, it's kind of shoulder, and it's not marked...
Where's the curb line?
The curb line is back here and eight-and-a-half feet away from this travel lane. Now, that tapers down, as you head south, it narrows.
So it's, it's a, it's essentially a parking area that's probably signed "no parking"?
That, it is correct, it's not signed for parking, it's not signed for bike lanes.
Was there a bus stop there at one time?
Yes.
Okay.
I think right there.
About how many square feet of steadily movement are we talking on this one? How many square feet? Because the other was eighteen and...
If we look at the, this little summary page, here are the three options.
Welcome for the...
Thanks for the cue.
Did y'all rehearse this?
For the segue.
Did y'all plan this?
He saw this in advance. So of the three options that we've looked at, the first one was the largest impact, about thirty, or three thousand sixty square feet, did not require a pole location, and had a five-foot walk as, as portrayed in the drawings. The second option was the, the smallest of the three with eighteen hundred square feet, did require the pole relocation, thus additional cost and a five-foot walk. And then the, the new version, alternate number three, is kind of in between the two at twenty-three eighty square feet and does not require pole location, and part of the reason for that size is the ten-foot walk being included rather than five as previously brought forth. Number three is the preferred alternative from the staff perspective. This item has been presented, at least in a preliminary manner, to the URA board a couple of weeks ago.
Number three.
And, and they were amenable to the alternative that was presented, which was number three. And so from this point, the question becomes, is it something that the city council is interested in us pursuing, knowing that there is an amenable board out there with the URA willing to, to work with us on this? And if so, then we will start, I guess, the negotiations with the URA board in terms of how this happens. Part of the discussion has been, you know, when could this get constructed? How would we go about doing it? It's something that...
What would it cost?
It's something that the city is likely would, would need to foot the bill for the entire cost of the improvement. Timeline, whether it's a fifteen or sixteen construction depends on some of the detail and, and what we work our way through. Obviously, we have not secured funding at this point in our budget, so that's likely to push it to a sixteen construction, potentially with design and all the right-of-way work and everything else happening in the fifteen period, 2015.
We don't have any kind of budget estimate at all in here, do we?
We've not put numbers to this in terms of construction costs because we just weren't sure if it was going to go forward. We can certainly proceed with that if the, if the council has a desire to pursue this, and then we can have some numbers that will help inform us in terms of the next budget cycle and how this may proceed.
And also how it interfaces with the URA and what contributions each entity can bring to the project as well.
That is correct.
And because I see, you know, there's two thing, two costs here, is the property itself and then the cost of...
The improvements.
The improvement. So I'm here, I'm reading off of Walter's notes evidently with my mind, but, you know, I'm wondering about if the cost of the, if the cost of the improvements is worth going after the property, you know, that, that's kind of my question there, is it? I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to see that nice, from Sixth Street over to College, that'd be a really nice streetscape, I guess, if, if we could get that ten-foot wide all the way, all the way through there, and then some, you know, landscaping going on besides.
Bill?
I think the agency's recent discussion, I think, you know, they realize that the improvements, the widen walk, the amenities will add value to the property, so while I can't speak for the board, I think there have been general conversations about possibly accepting the value of those improvements as the land value for the right-of-way that would be provided to enable the project, so...
Kind of where I was thinking.
Yeah, that's, that's the thought process right now, there's honestly, there'd have to be further discussions with the agency, but I think that is the general thought right now. The agency is getting ready to make this property available for proposals for developments and is anticipating this additional dedication. It's included in the description in the RFP that will be published on Saturday for the site and, and what they kind of anticipate as being the developable area. But I do think overall, the agency feels this would be an improvement to the overall area, would enhance the property, and would probably accept the value of the improvements as compensation for the property.
Well said.
Move it ahead?
Yes.
Heck, yes.
Do you, you gentlemen feel that this needs to be presented to the full council?
I think it would be a good idea to bring everybody into the loop on what we're...
It hadn't been to admin.
Correct, and I think this one probably would be best suited for regular agenda.
Let's put it on regular agenda then.
Sounds good.
All right. Nicole Baker has a water conservation plan status report. We've completed all the regular agenda items, and Nicole?
Good evening.
Good eve, good evening, good afternoon?
Yeah, so I'm here to give you a quick update on what we have going on for the conservation plan. As you all know, it's been in the editing process for quite some time, so now it's officially a public draft.
How long have you been working on this?
Um...
No criticism intended, just how long have you been working on this?
I had a first draft ready in 2009.
Okay.
And there's been a lot of in-house drafts going back and forth. So now we feel like it, well, it is out for the public, our first public draft, that was presented at the Sustainable Environment Commission this month. The month before, I just went there to give them a heads up that it was coming.
It was coming.
Mm-hmm, and my plan is to meet with them next month, find out, get feedback, find out recommendations. The hopes is, in, in hopes of that, is to get some good ideas, add them, see what they recommend. I also want to be able to add the new numbers for 2014, so that would put me into making those edits, not only the edits from the commission, but also the edits for the 2014 numbers, and have those ready for January.
So the commission's been asked to have their comments by their December meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so with the idea of 2014 numbers, that I don't foresee it changing the report. You know, I did, you know, extrapolate the last few months of this... You know, I did, you know, extrapolate the last few months of this, you know, of water use and such, so I don't think it's going to be a huge difference. I don't foresee that. I do still want to present it to them, so that would be January 2015, and hopefully, soon after, end up at council workshop or however else my superiors prefer it to go.
How large a document is this?
Oh, it's a hundred-some-odd pages.
Okay, so maybe, maybe a workshop would be appropriate?
I have been advised that would be a good step to take.
I thought maybe you were telling your bosses this ought to come through a workshop, it'd be okay to. Anything else?
Nope, that's just where I'm at. I'm hoping that work, council can see it. It might be February, March, depending on what the SEC says. I am moving forward as, you know, as far as getting this through as soon as we can so we can foresee the budget future for 2016.
And your 14 actables, too, so.
Yes.
And some of the proposals contained in the water conservation do involve some investment on part of the city.
You've been peaking?
It was at sustainable environment.
The man with the leg up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Glad it's, glad it's moving.
I am too, thank you.
I know, we got some.
Okay. Les McDonald's bringing his attorney. This cannot be good.
Bad news, it's your attorney, too.
I have no recollection of that, I'm sorry.
That's very good.
Okay, the topic is Southeast Moscow Sewer District contract status and extension.
Yes, the, as you all know, the Southeast Moscow Sewer District and the city of Moscow have a contract for services and have had since the early 1980s. We have been working on a contract revision that would, in essence, update and replace the last contract from the 1991 timeframe. That contract was put together in draft back in June, and a question was raised about whether or not that was the course of action the city should follow, or if an alternative, which would be working with the district to dissolve the district and have the city take over the sewer system within the district boundaries, would be a preferred alternative. So we've been working on that.
To interrupt you, which we currently maintain by force of that agreement?
Through that agreement, we operate the system, maintain the system, manage the bills and collection of fees for services, essentially run it as we would run our own system.
As if it were ours.
That is correct, that is correct. So we've been working on that since that time. Rod, in his capacity as city attorney, has been doing a fairly extensive amount of research in terms of what steps are required for a city and a district to undertake such an endeavor. It is not simply a matter of the district saying, "Okay, we're done," and city saying, "Yep, we'll take it." There's more to it than that, and there are a number of steps and processes that he has identified. Part of the intent today really was just to kind of give you an update as to where we are and hope you look forward to the next meeting of this group in December, which will be this eighth December, which we intend as the time that we would come forward to you with that detailed list of things that have to occur.
I mean, I can go over that a little bit.
We can touch on further.
The latest extension expires?
The end of January of next year, 15.
As we were extending it. And looking at how does the city take over the Southeast Sewer District if they do dissolve? There are several steps that have to happen. First, both the district and the city have to agree that that's what they want to do. And then the second step is that the city would have to have the capacity to do that, and apparently, we already do, all do that job anyway. And then the sewer district has to make sure that they have their finances in order, basically have their books in order, and have a plan to dispose of any surplus property that they have, figure out how they're going to dissolve, what are they going to do with the things that they have. Then the district has to, and that, do a public notice to announce that they intend to bring that up for a discussion, for dissolution, and they have a meeting and discuss, and they vote if that's what they want to do. Then there's a 30-day waiting period. If 10% of the population of the district eligible to vote decides that they want an election, then they would have to go through the election process. If that was to happen, it would take a little bit longer, then they'd have to have a election, and I think in this state, when they've consolidated elections, there's only twice a year that they can do that, so that would push it out. The earliest would be May when they could have that election. And then if they do pass the resolution, if they don't have to have an election, it could happen sooner, then the city would have to pass a resolution, if that's what they intend to do, and then it would go to district court. The district would be responsible for filing a petition with the district court, along with their resolution, the city's resolution. If the district finds that everything's in order, then they could issue an order and set a date for dissolution for the city to take over. But it is a, going to be a little lengthy process, but I mean, the earliest would probably be late spring at the earliest.
But you haven't uncovered any reasons why if, if both entities wish to do it, it cannot happen?
I think it'd be more of a political issue as to whether you really would want to, to do it or not.
But, but.
Legally.
State law, legally, all that stuff, it can be done?
It can be done, okay.
So on the eighth of December, the intent is to come back here, talk a little further about some of these processes and what they may entail. There are some other companion issues that go along with it that the council will eventually have to decide if we're moving forward, related to things like what are the fees that are going to be charged for customers in that area? How do we deal with the annexation questions? What do you do with future customers either within or outside the district? Things of that nature. So there's some, some of the detail that we'll have to get into in terms of how would we like to proceed if we are choosing to proceed, so.
Yes, and if we decide, if that's a process we want to go down, then we'll probably have to extend the current agreement again.
Which is why the extension's on the agenda, and we will work on drafting an agreement to be ready for that.
But the agreement would have to be extended in any case, wouldn't it?
Well, no, no, if you decided you didn't want to take over the system, then we have a new contract that we could.
Create a new contract.
Right, and that new.
Your decision.
That new draft contract has been provided to the district board chairwoman, and so they are starting their review of that, just in the eventuality that the city chooses to just proceed as we have with the last two contracts.
Want some road, too?
Well.
On your list, if we were to do this, you may already have this, but you would either have to have the district's agreement with the North Lakeville Highway District.
They have a copy of.
Transferred to the city, or the city would need to have it, create a new agreement with?
The new agreement.
New agreement with the highway.
That's on the list, yes.
There's a proposed agreement out there, but the Highway District hasn't heard back from the Sewer District yet, so, but they're busy working with the city to see what they're going to do, and once that, once that happens, then we'll figure out where the Highway District agreement happens.
Don't go getting greedy.
This is where something hits the highway?
Anything else, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Thank you both. Anything else for the committee?
I think we're done.
Done.
We're done. Thank you all.